Father, we thank you for this community and all the work here. Blessings upon those that come here to stay, to do the county business. If he wishes now, as we go about that business, protect our first responders, protect our homes and businesses. Always saying, we ask in our name.
A minute.
We shall only pray, and my ladies, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I want to mention that we have some athletes this year. The county manager, Allen Howard, he is an athlete. He belongs to the Georgia City County Vendors Association, but he is the manager of all cities, all counties in Georgia. And he has earned a high, and that's been presented tonight to him. I think that's a great honor to him, and I think it's a great honor to him too. So, we sent him off to get his award, which we all believe he deserves. Also, Mr. Maye is our chairman. He was out of the country on vacation. And also, Commissioner, District, two District Commissioners, is Dr. Peter Murphy. He was also out of the country, and he's in back this way at his feet. So, taking some time off. But we have enough here to have a forum, and we can go on with the business here tonight. So, I thank you all for being here. Public comment period, we have one signed up, and that is Monica Smith. If you take the action where you live.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't think your microphone is connected, and so the public cannot hear what you're saying. I am Monica Smith, I live on St. Simon's Island, and I've lived here since 1993. Some of you will remember that I have agitated for the updating of the comprehensive plan for several years. However, what I was expecting, expecting as a result of my prior experience, was that the county staff would assist the planning commissions, the mainland planning commission and the island planning commission, to carry out that task, since they are after all familiar with the area, and consultants that one hires or not. However, I kept my peace when the consultants were hired in the expectation that their work should be evidence first before I criticized it. The comprehensive plan that has been produced by the consultants is inadequate. The FLUM, or the future land use map, which goes with that comprehensive plan, is also inadequate. I've already addressed the map in the prior, I've been informed that the map has now been updated. But I still have the same concerns. First of all, I'm concerned that the Sea Island Company is extending its interest area way out into the marsh, almost over to St. Simon's Island. I think that is inappropriate. The waterways in there need to be open and accessible to the public at all times. They should not be patrolled by sea island motorcraft, which by the way, they were doing even back down in 1995. The second problem I have is that the industrial areas seem to go merely with what's already there. And then, they go and expand the industrial uses around the airport to include the historic Brunswick and Atamaha Canal. Why would you put industrial uses on either side of an historic structure that we hope someday to be able to invite tourists to come and visit and enjoy? Other industrial areas are rather spottily placed. Highway 99 has two small, rather small industrial areas. If we're planning for the future, and if we are planning for industrial development, then that means that some areas which are not now developed need to be designated for such uses, so that people know this is not where we want to build houses. In addition, an area such as the old Kate Road landfill is designated for medium density residential. That's totally inappropriate. You don't put residential housing on top of an old landfill. So, in other words, the consultants who put this thing together did not know what they were talking about. They did not even take into account our very good elevation maps, which have been prepared, and which indicate where we have marshes, where we have swamps, where we have backed up rivers, and where it is inappropriate to build things. None of that has been taken into consideration, and as I look at the map that's been presented today, it still hasn't been taken into consideration. So, if you all are going to approve this comp plan, I hope that you will accept, that is, leave out the map, and refer that to the planning commissions to be worked on in the future in order to really plan for this county. Thank you.
Friends Don't Let Friends Have Litters Program, and increase the annual control of FY19 revenue and expenditure budget by $3,000.
Gentlemen, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any of y'all around there?
Me either.
Eyes not working either? Did you hear me now?
You hear ya.
There's nothing light on through this. You try to turn that, but nothing's lighting on through this.
Now.
Should be on. That's the winter.
Red light comes on, this is moot. All of them need to vote to talk.
Pretty good?
Yeah.
Hello?
It's not working.
It's not working.
There's nothing to do, we're not going to get to me here to look at it.
Okay, Bob, you want a good day, get it to me.
You gotta get close. Get close. We just gonna have to talk loud.
Frame, frame to hear, and I'll frame the talking.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. You want the motion made again to add Agenda Item 4.1? We have a motion and a second, Agenda Item 4.1 to present agenda. We have a motion on the floor and a second.
But what is the motion for?
Okay.
What is the content of the motion?
Motion is to accept the Georgia Department of Agriculture's golden cap sterilization grant agreement in the amount of $3,000 to continue the Friends Don't Let Friends Have Litters program and increase the annual control FY19 revenue expenditure budget by $3,000 each.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Dan Bobb. We have a motion and a second on the floor. We need discussion. All right, I call the motion. All those in favor, say in front of your right hand. With the vote, that is unanimous, we'll add a motion to the present agenda. By public hearing land use. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are being limited to government information regarding your position. Ensure to avoid being repetitious. If you attend your group as a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated.
And their proposed land use is similar to what, similar to what they currently have on the property that has been used in recent years. But this is, would clarify the zoning and ensure that everything is codified in a PD text. But they are proposing to do a limited commercial marina, social gathering event center. And... So this is the aerial, this is South Harrington Road, and at the very end where the star is located is the subject property. And so their PD would encompass details defining what a limited commercial marina is, a social gathering event center, and then one residential dwelling, which would be accessory to wildlife refuge. So, the primary use would have to be a wildlife refuge. And if that is the primary use, then they would be able to do a residential dwelling, and the maximum square feet would be 4,075 square feet. And the proposal also includes parking. So, 44 spaces are provided on the site, and the requirement for an event center or a public or assembly space would be one space per 70 square feet. And the current existing building, which is the event center, is 1,060 square feet. And then, one space for each two employees would also be required. And so they definitely meet and exceed that current requirement. And they are looking to do a proposed new deck between the existing building and the gazebo that are currently on the property. So this is from the comprehensive plan, the 2008. This is the future land use map showing where the property is located, and this is the conservation, preservation area. So these are the evaluation standards under Section 1103 of the zoning ordinance that would apply for this property and would be for your review for any type of a reason. And there's just a few photos. This is the existing dock that's at this location. So they have a few boats and kayaks primarily at this. So this would be the limited commercial marina part of it. And then, this is the existing building on the site, which provides for the event center. And then this is the existing boat ramp that is in the right-of-way of South Harrington. It is public property and has garnered a lot of interest. There is currently an agreement that is being discussed between the applicant and the county regarding a lease agreement for parking at this location. And that is considered separately from this rezone, and is not tied into this. But there's been a lot of questions about that. So that is an agreement that's currently in discussion between the county and the applicant, or the owners of the property. So this is the site plan. PD zone, that's under three acres, does require a site plan to be included as part of it, and this would be the approved site plan. And this is just a little more zoomed-in version to show you some of the amenities on the site. And so the plan development text that is included in your packet, there's just the next few pages go through. This was the plan development text that was presented to the island planning commission on October 16th of 2018. And this is what we consider option A. So this is as presented to the planning commission. And I'll just point out a couple things on page two of this, under D14, the highlighted area. That, that is really the most substantial change that the island planning commission made. And I'll, and when we go through option B, I'll tell you more about that. But basically, what this language currently says under the option A that was presented to the IPC was, when they talked about limited commercial marina and the uses, it left a little bit more flexibility to what those uses could be. So the wording includes intended to be representative, but not all-inclusive. So it really gives some flexibility to interpretation. And the planning commission decided they wanted to be more, or recommended to be more specific in that list of uses, and not allow too much wiggle room in what those uses could be. And then the other change they made was, it's referred to throughout the document, that the zoning would be categorized as a PD CP, and they just requested that to be changed to straight PD, which conforms more specifically to what the zoning code actually calls out. So the planning commission action, they did have a duly noticed public hearing on October 16th of 2018. And the IPC during the public hearing heard 16 comments in favor. One comment was more questions, wasn't specifically for or against the project. And then there were two comments in opposition of the application. And so the IPC did discuss it and deliberate, and they voted four in favor with one abstention to recommend the application with revisions. And Commissioners Humphries and Meadows were absent that evening, and Commissioner Kate abstained from the vote. And then the revisions, as I discussed before, were removing the reference to PD CP and just stating PD, and then also revising that section to be more specific to the uses for a limited commercial marina. And so this is just option B that was sent to you today, that includes the revisions that the IPC made. So I just highlighted throughout this where those changes were made. So CP to PD instead of the PD CP. And then on page two, the language was changed to, under D14, that the LCM uses, which is limited commercial marina, uses include the rendering of the following personal services and businesses normally associated with the operation of marinas, including related peers and dockage. So it narrows it down to really include only those uses. So the recommended motion is to approve the application and in accordance with the plan development text and the site plan as presented to you today, and that is considered option B. And then here are your possible actions. So the first one does include if you wanted to approve the application as it was presented to the IPC. And then number two would be if you wanted to approve it based on the changes made by the IPC, which is considered option B. And then there are several other options for you to consider as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here tonight if you have any questions of him as well.
Yeah, I have a question. The PD CP removal, is that, so that was removed under option B, or is that removal also under option A?
That removal is under option B only.
Okay. And what was the, what was the purpose of that again?
Sure. So there was, there was a time that when there were PDs that were approved by the county, it would be a PD hyphen with another reference. And currently under the code, we only have a PD district. So if you're going to rezone to something, you rezone to straight PD, there's no hyphenation. So I think it was more of just something we used to do, and now we don't do that anymore. And the IPC just wanted to make it clear that the zone is straight PD, knowing that really all the details are in the actual text document.
So shouldn't we have put that in option A as well, if it's something we don't do anymore?
So option A was as presented to the IPC. So that was what the applicant had submitted, and it wasn't something that, you know, we had suggested as changes. And so that was the document that went forward to the IPC on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any of you have any other questions for Steffi before we open it up to public comment?
I just want to be clear, so the, the CD doesn't matter?
The CP, so the, the...
CP, I mean.
Sure. So basically, what will happen here is that the current zoning, it is straight conventional conservation, preservation zoning. And so that zoning district will totally go away for this property, and so the property will, the zoning district will be PD, but every PD has this corresponding, you know, text document that goes with it. So really, you can't just be straight PD, because there's no regulations that apply to that. All the regulations are codified in this separate document that really runs with the property. So, a lot of what they have indicated in the PD text is very similar to what we have in the conservation, preservation zone now. For example, right now, in the conservation, preservation zone, we do allow wildlife refuge as a permitted use, and you can have accessory caretaker's quarters, but that caretaker's quarters is not defined at all. So there's no size limitation, there's no, you know, number of people that can live in that. It's really not defined. And so what, what the applicant has tried to do here is really take that same language from CP, but say, you know, there can be one caretaker's residence on this property. The maximum square footage is 4,000 square feet. So they've tried to just define that and narrow that down more. So, so to your question, the CP does go away, but the PD encompasses a lot of what is currently in the conservation, preservation zone.
Right.
That helps. Yeah.
Okay. If there's no more questions for Steffi, I'm going to open it up for public comment. And I am going to ask for those that oppose to come forward first and state your name and where you live for the record. Julian, looks like you're moving.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith, and I live on St. Simon's Island. Although I spoke in support of this application at the IPC meeting two nights ago, I made it clear to the IPC that my support came with the... I made it clear to the IPC that my support came with the request that the IPC not recommend allowing, quote, "one residential dwelling accessory to a wildlife refuge," unquote, as part of the proposed plan development text. I made that request, or recommendation, because the one and a half acre parcel in question does not contain a wildlife refuge, nor does it seem to be, nor does it seem to be within a wildlife refuge. I'm not aware of any wildlife refuge anywhere close to the Village Creek Landing, though I would certainly like to see one there. If I'm wrong, I am willing to stand corrected. I also asked that the Island Planning Commissioners consider recommending other changes or conditions based upon comments or questions from the public. But so many people spoke in favor of the application that I suspect some members of the public who came prepared to oppose it were perhaps intimidated. Now, because the IPC did not discuss or act upon my recommendation, my request, or those made by the two people who spoke in opposition, I'm asking that you remand this application back to the Island Planning Commission for another hearing and for clarification of some issues. Now, let me explain why I spoke in support of this application early in the IPC meeting. It was because I believed the current use of the property is well-established and is appreciated by many members of the public. Like some others who spoke in support, I have fond memories of eating there back in the twentieth century and enjoying the view of the marsh. I continue to support the current use of the property with or without a PD text that makes it all hunky-dory. But I also believe it would be appropriate for the Island Planning Commission to discuss, among other things, how much parking should be required for the restaurant, a social event, social gathering event center, separate from any parking leased to the county across from the public boat ramp. And I hope the county and the new owners of the property will come to a good agreement on the matter of public parking for the boat ramp. Now, let me ask you, if you don't know the answer, to ask your planning staff if our zoning ordinance has a definition for commercial marina, limited or not limited or unlimited, social gathering event center, or wildlife refuge. If we don't have those definitions, why are we agreeing to permit these activities without a definition that we can rely on? So please defer this item until those definitions are provided. Send it back to the Island Planning Commission. And if you can't do either of those things, just please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other one? Mr. Holland, you want to get up and speak? Okay. State your name and where you live, please, for the record.
James Holland, and I live at two-three-two Buck Swamp Road here in Glen County and have been for about fifty years or so. Good evening to y'all. I wish all of you were here. I think people like myself could benefit by a full committee being here. First of all, out of all the times that I've been over there fishing, taking wildlife photos and all that out of Village Creek and that general area, I never encountered a wildlife refuge. All wildlife refuges are well-marked. You don't go in them unless you see some kind of sign. So how can you, how can anyone permit anything with access to a wildlife refuge that doesn't exist? It does not. Okay. Having said that, I did file comments the other night with the IPC. And one of my comments was that I filed a complaint about the applicant storing boats or kayaks in the marsh buffer zone. Well, the IPC, one man on the IPC seemed to question the applicant a little bit about that. And the applicant told that person on the committee that he had not violated the marsh buffer on that site, okay? Well, all of you have seen photos that I turned in on this, every one of you. I even sent some new ones out this afternoon. And I provided staff and the chairman a new photo of that site this evening, okay? Showing not only, you also, you also had, let me go right back a little bit. The person that was questioning the validity of my complaint, all they had to do over there the other night was go to their own documents, open it up to the site plan, and look for the J D, marsh JD line is, or it come around that area where those boats are at, cross the steps of that pavilion thing there, and then back across under the walkway down to the boats. And they could have seen. Look at the picture. And then look at that. Pictures don't lie. So I gave you another one tonight in which I should have looked much closer because not only were they in violation of the marsh buffer, they're in violation of the marsh JD line. Mr. Chairman, who's chairman tonight? I can't, I never know who the chairman is. Okay. Mr. Browning, you have the photo yourself that I presented tonight with a line that I drew in it showing where the marsh jurisdictional line come around and cross the steps and then across to the walkway. Now, they had boats in the marsh buffer all the way around that thing. Then some parts of them were also inside the JD line. In other words, where the marsh would be if they quit mowing it. They mow the marsh so that you can't tell where the JD line is at. But if they have a problem with the JD line and it's not proper and correct, now's the time to tell you. And people like me, so I will quit filing those complaints. However, this person, the applicant, was somewhat less than truthful with the IPC. And at best, was extremely misleading when he replied about having violated any marsh buffer over there. Now, if that's acceptable with y'all and you want to permit something that hasn't been totally and wholly truthful through the permitting processes, shame on you. That's a beautiful place over there. And I even commented that that is the most pristine water. Village Creek is probably the most pristine water on the coast of Georgia insofar as the fishing and what have you goes. I don't fish much anymore. I done got too old. They don't even want me to leave the house hardly anymore. But I used to go over there and get those fish just because they taste better than the other fish around here like in the Turtle River and places like that that's so polluted. There is no pollution at this point going into Village Creek. Now, if you also want to permit this thing, I would appreciate it if you'd make a stipulation in there that he put into this thing, "I don't want it, I don't want it permitted at all because he didn't, he didn't tell the truth." You've got to be truthful. Made me out a liar in front of all of Georgia, which I'm not a liar. Pictures don't lie. Make them put in a clause that they will not put in for a boat, electric boat horse at any time for this site. That creek, Harrington Creek, is much too shallow to be launching larger boats in there and then launching more boats in there. So think hard before you do this. If you want to issue this thing to someone that is more than truthful to part of your permitting process.
Mr. Holland, it's been six minutes.
Okay. I thank you. But you have photos. Ms. Patel, it either has a photo of that or is going to get one. And I know Ms. Lee has one. And the chairman has a photo. So if you don't want to believe me, look at the facts.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay. Anyone want to speak in favor? Just please state your name and where you live for the record.
Gentlemen, good evening. My name is Lynn HoShaw, resident of St. Simon's. I live in Island Square condominiums off of Demery Road. I have enjoyed this property in years gone by. It's one of the few opportunities where my family could really get out and enjoy the splendor of nature, see the nighttime falling, watch egrets, enjoy dinner, et cetera. I ask all of you, if I could, have all of y'all had that experience? If not, this is a wonderful time, an opportunity for all of us to have that presentation made available to all of those of us who are in Glen County and anybody who would possibly be visiting our wonderful Golden Isles coast. I had the privilege of speaking first the other night in favor of this project. I had then the privilege and was awed as the night went on to hear, as I think, Ms. Janet, I state a statistic of some sixteen, seventeen speakers that followed me. The accolade that was given was absolutely staggering to the family who is involved in this, Mr. McQuig, and the Gowan family as well. Mr. McQuig is married into that family. He is married way up. Let me just assure you. But the one thing that has come to me since that meeting the other night is one word. That one word is stewardship. What they are proposing here, what they have in their family history, what we can see here in the future is nothing but absolute one-hundred percent stewardship to the community, to the land, to the people, to the future. There are no abject changes coming forth in Mr. McQuig's presentation. There will not be. There will be none in my life. I won't live that long to see something that would be negative out of this project. I urge you to please go forward on this as expediently as you can and let's have something of great wonder and nature fulfillment at our fingertips. I hope y'all all have a wonderful night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the item on the agenda? Please state your name and your
Robbie Williamson, and I live on St. Simon's Island. And I've lived in this area for over forty-five years now. I grew up in Dunbar Creek Plantation, which is about a mile from this property we're talking about. I currently live on, off of North Harrington and can walk to this property. So I'm very familiar with the last thirty, forty years' worth of things that have gone on at that property and as unique and beautiful a piece of property as it is and what it truly means to the people in that area in this community. And I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to take this property with a family that has a proven history in this area, long, strong roots of stewardship that was brought up, those types of things, and fix something that we've got and ensure that we've got a win-win situation for the community and the people who own that property. So I encourage you tonight to listen to what's being presented and follow through with it and vote yes for it. I think it's a great opportunity for us to keep a piece of property that is sensitive to everybody in the hands of people who are going to take good care of it, but also put some restrictions on it that will be good for the community. And the other thing I'd like to encourage you to do is related to the parking on the boat ramp there. The public currently has access to that boat ramp, but without the parking spaces that are on the private property, that boat ramp is useless. If you put your boat in and you can't park your car and your trailer, what good is it? I would encourage you to take this opportunity. This family is reaching out, trying to find a long-term solution so that the public has access to that parking. Let's not miss this opportunity to get that taken care of. It's been a sticky point for a long time. And now's a perfect opportunity to find a long-term solution that suits the people in this community. So I would encourage you, move forward, make that a priority as well as voting yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Anybody else wishing to speak? Mr. Woodside.
Thank you, M.H. Woodside, resident of Glen County for forty-six years. And I can't really say much more than the people who have already spoken in support of this PD text conversion by the county commissioner than the fact I've enjoyed that creek and the atmosphere of Village Creek for many, many years and looking forward to it remaining in such a way that, in a context, that everyone's going to enjoy that for at least that many more years because of the interest and the desire shown to the county in trying to protect and utilize that property the way we've all enjoyed. Encourage you to move forward. I've been in that river many times and enjoyed it with my family and encourage you to support this request by the Gowan family whom we've all known for many years. Thank you. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Brunswick Golden Isles Chamber of Leadership. Thank you.
I'm Bill Kirby. I live on St. Simon's. And I ask that y'all approve this project and try to maintain a little bit of what old St. Simon's looked like. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Philip Jackson. I live at Fancy Bluff. And I just want to say that I am in support of this being rezoned to the current use that it is. I too have enjoyed that property and hope that you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, the public hearing is ended. And Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rezone the one point five-two acres located at five-two-six South Harrington Road, St. Simon's Island, which is currently zoned conservation preservation CP district, to rezone it to plan development PD to allow for the following specific uses: limited commercial marina, social gathering event center, and one residential dwelling accessory to a wildlife refuge, partial ID oh-four dash one-five-one-five-eight under option A.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second on the floor. Commissioners, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a little statement here. I'm in full support of the changes and all that we have been, that have been brought before us. I can't emphasize enough in support of the gentleman's up here a while ago about the parking area for the boat ramp. This issue dates back some six years in my tenure as a commissioner here. And quite frankly, I'm glad to see it come into an end. But as the gentleman stated, that boat ramp is basically useless if you don't have a place for the folks to park their trailers and their vehicles that get them in and out of water. And I want to heavily emphasize And I, I want to heavily emphasize to this board that we need to urge our legal team to jump on this tomorrow and get this thing closed out, get the finalization of what we're going to do with the parking area for the boat ramp, and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. Commissioners, anybody else have any comments or questions?
I would like to ask one, one more thing. Mr. McQuig, you represent Village Creek LLC, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right. Are you willing to stand here in front of the public, right here, right now, and go on the record to say that you will, and Village Creek LLC will negotiate in good faith for a mutually beneficial parking area for that dock with Glen County?
Absolutely, and we're already doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions or discussion points from the commissioners before we go to a vote? Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pass all items on consent agenda, general business, with the exception of any item that any individual commissioner desires to pull.
Second.
Commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any commissioner wishes to pull anything at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item four of consent agenda.
Item four, we're going to pull item four for further discussion. Okay, commissioners, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There be no discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Okay, commissioners, item four, approve the nomination of Jay Vance Hughes for consideration of appointment to serve on the Glen Brunswick Memorial Hospital Authority to serve the unexpired term of joan metachytis. The hospital authority will make the final appointment. The term begins immediately upon appointment and ends March 1, 2021. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I wanted to know what the process was for this, because I, all I saw was a letter. Was there a resume presented to us for this Mr. Hughes?
Aaron, you want to explain that process, please, sir? Or Catherine, y'all can flip a coin.
Arduani, or whoever.
I can speak to the.
Excuse me, by the way, I, I just, I was remiss. I, I failed to mention that in the absence of our county manager, our assistant county manager, Catherine Murft Downs was filling in, and I'm glad to see her sitting up here tonight with us and getting some good experience. Thank you, Catherine.
I can speak to the process itself. As far as when the application came in or the resume came in, I'll defer to assistant county manager. But the, the process is that the county submits names along with the city, depending on what kind of appointment it is, to the hospital authority, and they ultimately select that position. So typically, you submit up to three names. I understand this is the only resume that came in. So yeah, I think this will be what is forwarded to them unless you defer it to receive additional names. It's certainly possible they will send it back for additional two names anyway. But the process is you submit a name to the number of names to them, and then they select it from there.
So there was a resume? I mean, I know nothing, I mean, there was nothing other than basically his name saying he wanted to serve. So they got, they got more than that, though? Is that what you're saying? They got a resume? Or did we get a resume?
So the, the, the process is that the county forwards names to the hospital authority, and they'll select it. But they don't have to select it from that, that, that name or that person. And if they don't, they will send it back to the county for more names.
So, so we're the first step in the process?
That's correct.
Okay, so did we get a resume?
No, Commissioner Booker, we did not receive a resume. We just received his letter of interest.
So then, are we supposed to just know who he is? I, I know you don't know that, Arduani.
I do know that Mr. Hughes has served on the hospital authority in the past for the city of Brunswick. I can request that he submit a lot of his resume to us if you would like.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be able to vote on it without more information.
And if the commissioner would like to defer it, that's an option, and that'll allow for more resumes to come in as well. And you can select three names, submit those three names to the hospital authority so they can select one from the three. If they don't select it, it'll come back before you for another round, and so forth.
Aaron, can't, e- even if we take a vote on someone and turn it down, they, they can still, can't get, I mean, the hospital authority can still put that person on the board. Is that, am I right or wrong?
From, from the name you submit?
Yeah.
They have to, they have to select from the names that are submitted by the county or the city, depending on whose appointment it is. They have to select from those names.
But they can't just select, come up with some names and put them on there, right?
That's correct.
So, so if we have a vote on an individual, if we vote an individual down, can they select that individual still?
No, sir.
They can't? Okay.
You submit, the, the process is up to three names, and I understand that we're limited here because only one person submitted a, a, a name, a resume, or a letter of interest. But the process is typically the county will select three individuals who you are essentially nominating for that board, and they will select one of those three. So because we only have one, my recommendation would be that we defer this until we have three names, at least.
We defer it.
Second.
Okay, was that a motion, Commissioner?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call the motion. All those in favor signify to defer, signify by raising your right hand.
Do we need to put a, do we put, need to put a date or a time specific or anything on it, Aaron?
You don't.
You don't?
Yeah, you just bring it back to us when you have the resume, soon as you do. Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, general business, item five, consider adopting the 2018 Glen County Comprehensive Plan. And that is Ms. Pam Thompson.
Yes, sir. Good evening, gentlemen. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. You all have finally completed the process for preparation and adoption of the comprehensive plan. Back in July, you voted to transmit our draft to the DCA and a regional commission for review. Those reviews were approved. The other thing you asked because of concern of the future land use map was for our GIS staff to look at that map and review it between July and this evening. And two of our GIS team members, Andrew Strickland and Michael Mizrahi, who are both, grow up here and live here now and are very familiar with the county, went through and recommended approximately 2,500 changes to the future land use map. We looked at those. We did take requests from individual citizens that thought maybe their property was miscoded and looked at that. And you have in your attachments this evening the parcel ID numbers for the 25,000 parcels that were changed. We are using the parcel layer level of the GIS map, so sometimes when you see a color go beyond the actual land mass area, that's because of how it's drawn in the GIS layer. That's not something that was prepared by our consultant. They were using already-prepared county information. So you do have in your cover memo a list of the changes that were made since the last meeting, and staff recommends that you approve the 2018 Glen County Comprehensive Plan. And I'm here, and Ed DiTomaso from EPG Consultants, who helped us prepare this plan, are here tonight if you have any questions.
Thank you, Pam. Commissioners, you have any questions of Ms. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2018 Glen County Comprehensive Plan.
I'm going to hold that up until Commissioner Booker gets back, see if he has any questions, if you don't mind.
While we're waiting, I'd like to say a couple of things. Pamela, I'd like to thank you for all the hard work on this thing. I know you've been, you know, working on it hard. I'd like to thank everybody, staff included. I'd also like to thank all of the civilians, the local people that served on these boards. It's real easy to say I'm going to serve on a committee and do something like this, but you know what they say, when elephant's a mouse designed by committee. So we had two separate committees with multiple people on each one, and through some way, they managed to come up with a reasonable amount of agreement on this thing. I understand there's people that have some issues with it. I know it's not perfect. Nothing is ever perfect. I mean, it's a guideline. There's things that have to be tweaked, and we're probably going to have to do that. Well, I won't be doing it, but somebody will be doing it. But overall, you know, I'm very proud of the product you guys have, have put out. And, you know, I know we had a consultant here, but without the hard work your department put in, GIS folks, and, and the citizens of Glen County, we wouldn't be here. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stanball. I agree with your comments. Commissioner Booker, do you have any questions for Ms. Thompson? We have a, just to let you know, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this. So do you have any comments before we go to a vote?
No, not at this time. I think she's answered all my questions and talked with her extensively about this.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion, we have a second on the floor. If there's no, no other questions and discussion items on it, I am going to call a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, and thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, gentlemen. This will be transmitted to the Regional Commission of the DCA for their review. And to let you know, we did put out the RFP for a zoning code and ordinance update this past Monday, and that bid opening will be November 13th, so that after our team evaluates, it will bring you a choice for a consultant for step two in December.
Thank you, and I appreciate, I appreciate all you've done with this. Item six, consider authorizing a fee waiver for the rental fee in the amount of $3,400 for the use of the Selden Park Gym for the Navarotti Festival from October 11, 2018, through October 20, 2018, and October 24, 2018. I'll tell you what, that does not make sense to me. How do you go from one date to two other different dates?
It's, it's.
It's that week and one weekend.
Yes.
Don't take a rocket science sticker that one out. Careful it does.
Well, well, at my pay rate, I need help. But, but Assistant County Manager, if you can fill us in on the details.
Yes, sir, Commissioner. The American Indian community has requested this fee waiver for Selden Park for the use of the Navarotti Festival that is held every year. This is the second year that they have requested a fee waiver, and last year it was granted as well. So you've got several alternatives before you tonight, and I'll leave that decision up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a fee waiver for the rental fee in the amount of $3,400 for the use of the Selden Park Gym for the Navarotti Festival from the dates listed on here, so I don't have to try and read these in a second.
Seconds. Have a motion, we have a second. You commissioners have any other discussion on this? Okay, we're all clear. I will call a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, and we are going to move on to the last item, item seven. Consider approving the proposed revenue bond in the amount of $8,500,000 issued by the Housing Authority of the City of Brunswick for the benefit of Glen Pines Housing Partners LP, for the purpose of financing the acquisition, rehabilitation, and equipping of a certain residential rental facility consisting of an existing eighty-eight unit multifamily housing development located at 80 Glen Marsh Drive, Brunswick, Georgia 31525, currently known as Glen Pines One and Two Apartments. Aaron, is this yours?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I can handle this. We've got, Mr. Harris is in the audience tonight. He's the attorney for the Housing Authority. But as the agenda item says, they are, they are seeking to issue eight and a half million dollars of revenue bonds. The reason is before the county commission this evening is because as the governing authority, it's in your jurisdiction, you have to approve it, and it's, it's really more of a formality for that. It is not a debt of the county. It will not be accounted as a debt against the county, but it's more formality because the law requires the governing authority to approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the proposed revenue bond in the amount of $8,500,000 issued by the Housing Authority of the City of Brunswick.
Second.
Gentlemen, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? You all ready to get out of here? Okay, I will call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Attorney, we have any executive item, executive?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second. All those in favor, unanimous. We're.